I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. We've got a very special council meeting for you. And we should, I believe we've got three members appearing telephonically who are out of town, out of state, and in one instance, out of the country. So Deputy Mayor Honda and Councilmember Lydia Sefah-Dawson, can you hear us? Hello?
Uh, yes, we can.
Okay, that's Susan, and then Lydia?
I'm here, yes.
Oh, very good, okay. Oh great, and then Councilmember Tran, can you hear us?
Yes, good morning from Seoul.[625.55][625.55](laughter)
All right. What a world we live in, isn't it amazing how we can all come together? Thank you so much, our three council members, for making the extra effort to be present telephonically for this special event. Okay. All right. So this is really one of the great things I get to do as mayor, and that we get to do with the city, is to recognize key people that have come into our community and have accomplished so much. And I started the Key to the City program almost exactly six years ago. And it was to recognize exactly the kind of person that we are recognizing today. You know, we have so many people that have come into this community and have made such lasting contributions, and have really put down brick by brick, day by day, with all the foundation of their accomplishments, and the relationships, and their achievements in our community. And, you know, oftentimes when they're here and we're going through the day-to-day, you know, pieces of life, we don't necessarily, you know, think, "Gosh, what's it gonna be like without this person?" Or, "What's it gonna be like when that person, you know, transitions to a different role?" Because eventually, we all do, we're all passing through our positions. But what does last are the relationships, and the friendships, and the accomplishments on behalf of the public, and the relationships that are forged. So it has been a great honor of mine, and I know that everybody here at the City of Federal Way, to work with Dr. Chief Allen Church, and he has just done so much for our community. And when I learned that he was contemplating retirement, first, I, you know, I contemplated doing exactly what the board did initially, which was try to talk him out of it, and they did, just for a little bit. But retirement awaits, and so do grandchildren, and so does the rest of life. And we're here today because we want to honor somebody who has just made a profound impact on those around him in the community, and he's been a good friend of mine. So today, I will be providing the key to the city to Dr. Chief Allen Church, and I just want to say a few words, and then we'll... Tyler has a couple pictures in mind that has, and I'll talk about that when the time comes. So Chief, it's been an honor to work with you. And, you know, I could tell you that when we actually had an event over at one of the, at the fire station headquarters, there was a room upstairs, it's, you know, right off the, in one of the heart of the fire station, and it's where the firefighters meet in their break room, but it's also where the local government officials meet regularly, either meet there, or at Lake Haven, or the school district, or here at the city. And that's because the heads of your local governments get together regularly, quarterly. And I see Bill Gates, you know, the chair of the Fire Commissioners, long time in that role, and the heads of the local governments get together, and we talk about issues. So my, and the police chief is there as well, and the fire chief, and the leadership. And I could tell you that over the course of the past six years, it has been truly an honor, and frankly, a real benefit for me as your mayor, to have the benefit and the friendship, and the, really, the mentorship that Chief Church has provided during that time. You know, he has been our chief of, and I say ours because, you know, he's, it's not just Federal Way, but obviously, South County. He was there when that transition occurred in 2006. He has been in the fire service for 43 years, 42 of those in this community, one is a volunteer before he got here. And he served in, I believe, every role at every level of the, of South County Fire, South King Fire. And really, that, what that provides is amazing, just imagine the amount of insight and camaraderie that that presides. But it also has provided him with an opportunity when, you know, times, you know, where there was, during the economic downturn, and they had to figure out at the fire service, how were they going to navigate their way through that? When they've had, you know, certain, you know, medical issues, and certain issues that have been affecting firefighters. My, as I talk about my brother Phil a lot, you know, he's one of those firefighters that has been affected by an on-the-line job as a result of his fire service. And there are so many issues that face our firefighters, and Dr. Chief Church has been there at every step of the way. You know, at that ceremony that we had at the fire station, I talked about something that my brother Phil, and that, yes, that would make him Phil Farrell, the firefighter from Furcrest, who's sort of the Will Rogers of the family. And I don't think he knew he was quoting Maya Angelou all those years when he would say this, I had to tell him later, I said, "Phil, I think you stole a quote from Maya Angelou." But I will quote Maya Angelou, because this is actually, her quote was so to the point of how Chief Church has made us all feel, made me feel, and it went right to the core point. And that's, you know, Maya Angelou once said, quote, "I've learned that people will forget what you said. People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." And that quote epitomizes how he has impacted me personally, and this community. And everybody who's worked with Chief Church walks away feeling more appreciated, more valued, and truly listened to. And so, on behalf of a great community, we say thank you, Al.[989.28][989.28](applause) I'm gonna meet you there, and then I'm gonna read this to you as I hand it to you, okay? And then we've got a bunch of pictures, and then, we did bring lots of cake, and we're gonna have a reception afterwards, all right? So we're gonna have probably a couple of sets of pictures. I'm getting to the point where I need the glasses, brother. All right, so, let me show you, Key to the City. City of Federal Way. Key to the City of Federal Way, Washington. Presented this November 19th of 2019 to South King Fire and Rescue Chief Al Church by Mayor Jim Farrell. Your over 40 years of service to the Federal Way community, including 18 years as fire chief, and your participation in the historic transition to SKFR in 2006, will leave an enduring legacy. Thank you for your leadership, and service, and friendship to the residents of Federal Way. Thank you, Chief.[1058.48][1058.48](applause)
Can you all hear me? Sorry, that's what I do back at the station. Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, wherever you are, council members, thank you very much, this is an incredible honor. It's an honor to have so many members of the department here, so many members of my family, thank you. My new exercise program, I think you've seen the little guy running around?[1104.83][1104.83](laughter) That'll be my exercise program in retirement. And to my wife, who has been with me for 45 years, and supported me the entire time. Thank you all. Thank you all for being here, thank you for this honor, and you'll still be seeing me somewhere. Thank you.
All right, thank you.[1126.32][1126.32](applause) All right, so Tyler, we're gonna do three sets of pictures, Tyler, which first? Okay, all right. Tyler's gonna boss this around for a few minutes. Okay, we'll do just one with us, and then we'll bring you guys down. I do, I want to recognize, we do have several fire commissioners here. We've got Commissioner Bill Fuller.[1185.04][1185.04](applause) Commissioner John Ricketts.[1191.04][1191.04](applause) Commissioner Mark Thompson.[1197.24][1197.24](applause) Right out of my head, Mark, sorry. And Commissioner Bill Gates.[1204.24][1204.24](applause) Okay, Tyler, what do you want next? Okay, so we'll step aside, let's bring up the family, and you're gonna bring up the fire service. Okay, family next. Let's give us family a big round of applause.[1259.28][1259.28](applause) All right, thank you. All right, Tyler, who's down? Okay, all of our department personnel, the commissioners. It's like a wedding.[1295.44][1295.44](laughter) All right, you guys, we're gonna have a brief recess. We're gonna reconvene in about 10, 15 minutes, but let's go ahead, we've got coffee, refreshments, and don't want to have any. All right. Thank you, everybody, brief recess.
Uh, Mayor Farrell?
Yes, yes. Go ahead.
Councilmember Safa Dawson and I are in the same room, so, uh, we're together.
Okay, all right, thank you. And would you, uh, would you mind telling everybody where you're at and what you guys are doing?
We are in San Antonio and we are at the annual meeting for the National Foundation of Women Legislators.
That's great. Okay, fantastic.
And, uh... In the lot, yeah.
And you, uh, you both won an award, or you're going to win an award while you're there, correct?
We were awarded last night with, uh, what is it called? Exceptional Leaders. No.
Women of Excellence.
Women of Excellence.
That's right, and, and you certainly are, and thank you so much for the work you're doing back there and, and back here, so, uh, and we move, everybody's moved back to their original places, so, uh, just to make sure that, uh...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, um, because you are, uh, you are present telephonically. Okay, well, let's go ahead and, uh, and let's get started, everybody. Um, now, we've got a very important proclamation. It's Native American Heritage Month for November of 2019, and I'll turn this over to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I really want to sincerely take the time to thank the staff, city staff, in helping us put this together. It took a lot of effort and a lot of work, uh, so, thank you. Also, I want to take the time to thank Councilmember Lydia Safa Dawson, who helped me bring this forth and, uh, worked with me diligently in preparing for this document and this proclamation. With that, I would like to invite, uh, the Mukulshu Indian Tribe Vice Chairman, Mr. Donnie Stevenson, um, and I would also like, feel free to come to the podium, I would also like to invite, um, the wonderful and amazing Pam Tuggel, who is the Executive Director of Equity for the Federalway Public Schools, and, um, I would like to invite Ms. Amanda Rumbayan, who is the Native Education Coordinator with the Federalway School District, and I also want to invite, uh, our very own, uh, Federalway resident Catherine Festa Haida to the podium as well. And, um, I will begin to read this proclamation, uh, and, uh, I will invite you guys to share a few words, um, and then I'll present this proclamation to you guys, uh, down at the, at the podium. So, here it goes. The proclamation, Native American Heritage Month, whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1916 with recognition expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990 to designate the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas Washington State is home to 29 federally-recognized Native American tribes, including the Mukulshu Indian Tribe and the Puyallup Tribe of Indians located in Federalway and surrounding areas, and whereas Federalway was built upon the ancestral lands and villages of indigenous peoples of the, of this region who have been here since time immemorial, and whereas Native American tribes have made and continue to make invaluable contributions to the diversity, arts, knowledge, labor, technology, science, philosophy, and economy of the state of Washington, and whereas the historical and cultural contribution, particularly those of the Mukulshu Indian Tribe and Puyallup Tribe of Indians, have substantially shaped the character of the city, and whereas Native American tribes in Washington State are leaders in environmental protections, from protecting treaty fisheries to strengthening the national efforts to protect lands from environmental destruction associated with resources, uh, extraction, and whereas Federalway is committed to strengthening our relationship with Native American people and Native American tribes and support their efforts to improve their people's quality of life, and whereas Federalway supports the efforts of law enforcement to address the epidemic of missing and murdered indigenous women, and whereas Native American Heritage Month is celebrated annually to recognize Native American cultures, history, traditions, art, land, and contributions. Now, therefore, we, the undersigned mayor and city council members of the City of Federalway, do hereby proclaim November 2019 as Native American Heritage Month in Federalway and encourage all residents, uh, to rec- to recognize the accomplishments and contributions the Native American community has made to our society, and salute all of the local organizations that work with and support the Native American community. Signed this 19th day of November 2019. And I also want to take the time to thank my colleagues, uh, as well, for their support of this measure, and, uh, Councilmember Copain, I know that he's, uh, played a critical role in giving advice, and one more thank you to Councilmember Seth Elson, uh, for the Brotherton Indian Nation of Wisconsin, who also helped create this piece of work along with Catherine. Thank you for all your help and support in this effort. Uh, so, Mr. Donnie Stevenson, you're, feel free to say a few words.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel, uh, Your Honor, Mr. Mayor, uh, citizens of, uh, of the City of Federalway. Uh, my name is, uh, Donnie Stevenson, and I'm the Vice Chairman of the Mukulshu Indian Tribe. I'm, uh, proud to be here today on behalf of the Mukulshu Tribal Council and our tribal people, and, uh, members of all indigenous, uh, communities and people throughout the region, uh, to witness this important and powerful, uh, proclamation, uh, by the City of Federalway. On behalf of the Mukulshu Indian Tribe and our people, I'd like to thank the City of Federalway, uh, her citizens, uh, her city council, along with all of the city's leadership for their actions, uh, tonight to honor our tribal people as the first of this region, and to affirm their respect and acknowledgement of tribal nations that have been living and thriving in this region for thousands of years, uh, literally through hundreds of generations, uh, since time immemorial. I'd also like to acknowledge, um, to take a moment and offer appreciation for your efforts to engage and strengthen our government-to-government relationship. This is a two-way effort and an ongoing dialogue, which we're proud to be a part of. It's ultimately our people and citizens who shall benefit, gain, and grow, uh, through and from this collaborative spirit. Moving forward, Mukulshu hopes to continue to build, to nurture, to cultivate, um, this relationship and to promote mutually beneficial ideas and outcomes, and to further develop, uh, community engagement, uh, with the City of Federalway. It's our belief as native peoples that our actions today have far-reaching and very long-lasting, um, uh, impacts and effects, that we believe the actions we take today, um, have direct impact out to the seventh generation, uh, that follows us, and, uh, this obviously profoundly impacts, uh, the way that we view our, our fit in the world and our place in the world, and how our decisions are made, um, clearly have a, a, a significant impact, um, from sort of this general belief and from this ideology. Um, i- it's in this vein that we, as Native American people, um, truly believe that we, we don't inherit from our parents or elders, but we, in fact, borrow from our children. And, uh, as a result of this sort of, uh, belief, uh, we must remember that it's through efforts like, uh, this effort here tonight, that, um, the behaviors and relationships and decisions that we engage on nights like this one, um, they lay the foundation, um, for the future, and it's the foundation on which our future is built. And, um, with that, I would again like to thank, um, the City Council of Federalway, uh, City of Federalway Council, um, the mayor, and citizenship, um, for the spirit of collaboration under which, uh, we are here tonight, and, uh, we're happy to be here representing not only our people, but all indigenous people in the region. Thank you.[578.29][578.29](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, uh, Deputy Mayor Honda, and the Federalway City Council Members, as well as the citizens of Federalway. It is a pleasure to receive this proclamation on behalf of Dr. Tammy Campbell, our Federalway Public School Superintendent and the Federalway Schools. My name is Pam Tuggel. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Equity, and again, I'm happy to announce and introduce Amanda Rumbayan, our Coordinator of Native Education. First of all, we would like to start with acknowledging the people whose land we are gathered on today. Federalway is located on the ancestral lands of the Duamish, Puyallup, and the Mukulshu. Our present-day closest federally-recognized tribe, as Councilwoman Moore stated, is the Puyallup Nation. We have 342 scholars in the Title VI Native Education Program and 97 Title III Native Scholars. Over 80 tribes are represented in the Federalway Public Schools. In Federalway Public Schools, we're committed to honoring the rich cultures, histories, and the sovereignty of our 29 federally-recognized tribes in Washington State, teaching them about their communities, systems of governance, languages, economies, and the contributions to Washington State, as well as the United States.
Tan Chi, Amanda Rumbayan, Dislocation. Um, hello, my name is Amanda Rumbayan. I am Turtle Mountain Chippewa, um, and I wanted to just, um, more specifically, um, tell about some of the following programs that Federalway Public Schools offers. Um, so, I do weekly check-ins with scholars and identified staff in the high schools, assisting with preparations, um, and resource identifications, and support related to post-secondary pursuits, um, ensure our native scholars have the opportunity to participate in the UW Native Student Day, um, the Native Student Success Summit at Highline College, um, and we have a, um, Native American Youth Leadership Academy that we have, uh, a, a group from Federalway, um, that attends, and we also have the Federalway Native Youth Leaders. Um, we're building our scholars' leadership capacity. Um, and we provide, uh, weekly drum art community circles, um, monthly and quarterly cultural opportunities, um, there's a Native Teachings Program, um, our, we have family gatherings, indigenous dinners, um, we have an indigenous gardening class, and those are just some things, um, just to name a few, um, and we provide assistance to identifying resources that are available to our native scholars.
And as a registered member of the Cherokee Nation, I'm very honored to be here tonight as well. Again, we want to thank you for this proclamation on behalf of our Native American scholars and all of our families and citizens of Federalway. We're very honored to be here. Thanks for having us here this evening.[792.01][792.01](APPLAUSE)
Good evening, Mayor Jim Farrell and Deputy Mayor Honda and councilmembers. Thank you, Councilmember Martin Moore, for bringing this forth. I really appreciate it. Today, I'm honored to accept this proclamation to celebrate Native American Heritage Month for the pe- month for the people who first called this land home. As a founding member of the King County Native American Leadership Council, I'm truly honored. We remember the struggles and the tragedies they endured. We honor the place and in contributions to this shared story of America. Elizabeth Collison was my grandmother. Marina Jones was my mother. My name is Catherine Festa. I am Haida. I am a raven of the Double-Finned Killer Whale Clan. My mother was taken from her village at five years old and put in a residential school on Alert Bay. She lost her language and her culture. She was the youngest child of 15 children. Only nine of those which became adults before she left, she remembered their life on the Haida Gua Islands, were rich with family, seafood, singing, and dancing. Even though we are less than 1% of the population in King County, we are still here. Howa, thank you.[889.72][889.72](APPLAUSE)
All right, thank you very much. Just give them a round of applause. Thank you.[960.12][960.12](APPLAUSE) Okay, uh, now, moving to, oh, before we go on, uh, we've got, uh, our Councilmember-Elect, Linda Kochmar, in the audience. Give her a big round of applause.[974.43][974.43](APPLAUSE) Our former mayor, Councilmember, uh, State Representative, exactly, uh, and we're, we're looking forward to having you back up on the dais, uh, starting on, at the beginning of January. Thank you, Linda. Um, and I think we're gonna hear from you in a little while, too, regarding some public comment. Okay, uh, now, we're on to our 2020 Legislative Agenda Policy Advisor, Bill Vidino. Bill?
Greetings. Mayor, councilmembers here, councilmembers across the country, and a councilmember around the world. Here is our, um...
Let me hear yours.
Let me hear yours. Here is the, um, the continuation of our process to come up with a draft legislative agenda, and as you all know, uh, councilmembers have been giving us ideas, as well, as well as the mayor, and so, this is where we're at so far. But first, let's talk about our key dates. Of course, we have today where we're going to, you're going to see, and you also have the PowerPoint, you're going to see what, what you all have come up to, come up with at this point, and then, ongoing right now, the mayor and our lobbyist, Mr. Feigar, are meeting with our three representatives to work on their, listen to them about their priorities, and then, a week from tomorrow, you will see a draft of not only what you've submitted so far, what the mayor submitted and staff, but also what we've discussed tonight and then through the week. And then, um, at next meeting on December 3rd, our lobbyist will give an overview of the session, where we expect things to go, and then, you will then finalize the agenda, and then we have our legislative breakfast with our representatives on December 11th. But the key right now is, this is a short session, just 60 days, and what we're picking up from Aaron Feigar and other people is, funding will be limited for significant initiatives. However, this is a year for us to submit things that are very urgent, but also, never stop selling. We need to continue to educate legislators on initiatives for 2020 and beyond, so, and that's what, a lot of what you're gonna see here. So, new and high priority items right now, just, just for your consideration, is, uh, from our police and the mayor, the, the chief, of course, additional funding for academy classes, that came from some of you as well, too, additional Safe City Cameras, support Representative Pelachiati's continued resubmital of the air noise mitigation legislation, so that will include Federalway, so that those noise packages and insulation will be included eventually, and then, funding for a 501(c)(3) organization for the proposed Veterans Monument, which a group is working on right now, and of course, will be asking everywhere, federal, private, et cetera, and then, of course, as we always do, you know, support the, um, Federalway Public Schools agenda, and then, of course, from our representative, Christine Reeves and others, uh, support working family initiatives, including childcare. Now, as far as transportation priorities go, a lot of these are from you, the mayor, and many of these are resubmitted, but, uh, once again, if not a short session, but continue to work with, uh, the 27th District, which is our western neighbors, to widen South Route 56 for better access to ST links and, um, Highway 18, so that not only our people on the west side, but those people, uh, in that other district from, um, Brown's Point can have better access to all the connectivity that's going to happen, and then continuing to work on the pedestrian bicycle and traffic, traffic capacity in downtown, and then, of course, the city center access project, we've heard loud and clear from you all as well, too. Crime and public safety, continue to be vigilant about launching the Resource Center for, much like the REACH Center in Tacoma, the Youth Substance Abuse Program, a staff positioned over youth violence prevention, and then, of course, as we mentioned before, academy classes and Safe City Cameras. And then, of course, in aircraft noise and health priorities, of course, we already mentioned the Pelachiati Bill, but also, once, as we've talked to this, these many council meetings now UTC, once formulated, we need to support and funding the next phase of the Ultrafine Particle Study at the University of Washington. And in addition, Tina Orwell, from the district north of us, she will be proposing, uh, legislation for the failed noise packages that are in their area, so that not only will they get taken care of, when people get noise packages from this point on, there will be a warranty to those as well, too. Homeless priorities, of course, uh, the panhandlers, the, um, those experiencing homeless, the Work Program is, is at the top of the list, and then, of course, uh, working with Sarah Bridgford, we're getting, um, those initiatives that you talked about at the last meeting in, in the form, so we can forward those to our legislators as well, where it's applicable. And then, of course, community priorities, of course, we already said, supporting the legislative agenda for the schools, and the Veterans Monument, and of course, childcare. And also, there's been a few others that we've received, for instance, uh, Deputy Mayor Honda, you wanted to add to it, examine low-income housing exemption, so how would you like us to approach that?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, okay. Uh, how would I like you to approach that? I, um, not sure how I want it worded, but I think we need to talk to our legislators about how, um, that is funded and then passed on to cities, especially with South transit coming into South Creek County.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll work on that together, but I wanted to make sure that, that got onto the, into the discussion today.
Okay.
So, then...
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And then, of course, the projects in progress are very important. Uh, right now, Sarah Bridgford and her team have the RFP out for, uh, youth after-school programs. One, one is going to happen for sure, and two more are applying, so we should have those dollars over two years, working on three after-school programs, and then, of course, um, we're working with DCYF, Ross Hunter's group, uh, to, uh, have a violent prevention study that will be done independently, but will study what our initiative looked at and what's happening in Federalway, so we can be informed for the REACH Center and other things that are going on. And then, of course, uh, I believe we're already done with the design funding for optimizing downtown circulation and traffic capacity, so those are the status of, of where we're at now. And then, um, we're in the process, as you've heard, ad infinitum, about the Department of Commerce study and the impacts of Seattle-Tacoma Airport, and we're basically, week to week, working on that very hard, and, um, I would anticipate there will be a follow-up study, that then maybe we'll be matching funds with the legislature as well, but I believe that'll be 2021, not in 2020. So, at this point, any questions or discussions? You want to give me direction now or direction offline?
Councilmember Newble.
No, I just want to talk about the airport noise.
Yeah.
Um, I was, um, going to bed last night, and at 11:30, they flew over our area, and it was loud and, and actually shook a few things in the house, and then, this morning, it was about 6:30 a.m., more planes went over again, so, we're back on the, on the fly path, and, um, and it's, it really is annoying, and it also is dangerous, and it does, it does give, it gives some of the, the stuff that comes from the planes out onto the ground and into the, into the area, and it harms the animals as well as the people, so...
It does.
Um, and I know we're in a coalition, or at least, I think we're still in that coalition...
Yeah.
And I'm sure those other cities have the same, have peoples that have the same problems, and we have to do something with them, because we can't let them ruin our city and ruin the health of our citizens.
Agreed. We're, we're engaged in multiple fronts. One of this is, as you could see, the representative, we want, uh, we're asking Representative Pelachiati to resubmit, uh, the bill he proposed to, uh, bring, to, uh, bring down the line where Federalway will be included, and there's, uh, you know, numerous, you know, coalitions and, and, uh, efforts and studies, and, and it's something that we're engaged on multiple different levels and different fronts. So, uh, Bill is, uh, is making sure that he's our point person for all of those. He attends meetings. Uh, we was just at the Department of Commerce earlier this week, um, handling a meeting in regard to, um, uh, that air pollution, uh, study and, uh, the impacts to the area. So, we're engaged, and we're, one of the things is, it, there's another piece to this as well, is that, recall if you will, that the council, uh, voted to temporarily suspend, or at least at this stage, suspend our involvement in the START Committee, based on what, uh, our, our neighboring and, and partner cities, uh, Burian and Des Moines, um, had also objected to, was about unilateral action taken by the port, uh, with regard to some of their processes about ex- uh, expansion, further expansion of the airport, and how that was conducted and the lack of notice provided to START members. So, we're in, we're in communication with Burian and CTEC, um, before we agree to come back to the table, and we're going to be linking up arms with, with Burian and, and CTEC, excuse me, uh, Burian and Des Moines, uh, to make sure that, uh, our voices are heard, and part of it is, is that, the reason why we suspended our participation in the START Committee was to make sure that we're not just getting sort of, um, patronized and get, kind of get tapped on the head and said, "Yeah, thank you very much for your participation, we're just gonna run over you." Uh, we're a city of 100,000 people, we're not gonna get run over, and, you know, the cities of Burian and, and Des Moines and these other cities, that we have families, and these are, you know, the people's homes, and their children, their lives are, are at issue, and we want to make sure that our voices are heard, and we don't want to just be part of process for the sake of process. So, that process is ongoing on multiple levels on multiple fronts, so we'll, uh, we'll keep you updated as that proceeds. Uh, other questions as, as it relates, now, keep in mind, this is just a draft legislative agenda. We wanted to give you plenty of time, because it's not gonna come up for a vote before you until the next meeting, but we wanted to make sure we can, gave you the sneak peek or this trailer version, um, to, uh, give you an opportunity, um, either now or, uh, in the interim, uh, and also, folks out there, that you, if you think that there's something we should be, uh, talking to the legislature about, shoot us an email, uh, either through Bill Vidino, myself, a councilmember, um, and we'll consider it for our legislative agenda. At our next council meeting, um, it'll be December 3rd, um, at our next council meeting, that's where this will be voted on, and then, the week after that, we have scheduled a legislative breakfast with our legislators, uh, and the council, at the community center. That'll be on Wednesday, December 11th. Uh, doors open at 7:30, the meeting starts at 8:00 a.m. So, that's Wednesday, December 11th, Community Center, 8:00 a.m., and it'll go for probably about an hour, and, uh, we're gonna be talking about, uh, these issues. What was that?
Oh, uh, Mayor Farrell, may I say something?
Yeah, of course, yes.
Uh, thank you for, uh, the legislative agenda and showing us, uh, perhaps the council members between now and the next meeting, can, we can hold small meetings and talk about the bill and talk about the legislative stuff?
Certainly.
That's great, and, you know, um, actually, counsel, I just want to let you know, uh, Bill's got a master sheet, almost kind of a cheat sheet, that shows, um, you know, things we asked for last year and how, you know, how things have been kind of tied up, uh, from last year's asks to this year's asks, what we got last year, and so, uh, we can provide that as well, to help you sort of connect dots, uh, but we want to make sure, but again, once again, if people out there think that there should be something we ask the legislature, let us know, and we'll consider it. This is the time. Um, not right this minute, but, but, um, you know, let us know about it. We've got public comment coming up here as well. Counsel, anything else on the legislative agenda? Okay, uh, great, thank you very much. Uh, so, again, counsel, let us know about that. Uh, Bill, great job, great work.
Thank you.
Uh, we met with, uh, our lobbyist, Aaron Feigar, earlier this week. Uh, we're gonna be meeting with our, with our delegation, one on, uh, you'll, we'll be, we'll be meeting with them, uh, prior to that December 11th meeting. Um, okay, um, and, uh, all right, now, let's move on to Mayor, Mayor's Emerging Issues and Report. We've got the Town Center steps, uh, ribbon-cutting ceremony on Tuesday, uh, excuse me, on Wednesday, Wednesday, December 4th at 3:00 p.m. It's right there. Uh, the agendas are incorrect. I hope you got that, Mr. Regner, and, uh, and Haley Dunworth. The, okay, all right. Uh, so, um, our, uh, our mirror staff is walking out the door. So, um, with that, EJ, you want to take it from there?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers, uh, both here and on the phone. Um, so, over the summer and, and through last spring, you've probably, if you've been to Town Square Park or in the downtown, you've seen a giant construction site between the Performing Arts Center and Town Square Park, and it's my great honor to show you a picture tonight, um, on the screen of the almost-completed... And it's my great honor to show you a picture tonight on the screen of the almost-completed staircase that we've spent all summer constructing. It's a huge success for the city, it's a great way to break through that 20-foot-high wall and connect, you know, the different areas of our downtown. So with that, we have a ribbon-cutting scheduled for 3:00 p.m. on December 4th, and we are hoping that everyone can join us there. We're asking people to park up on top of the wall, not down at the street. The ribbon-cutting will be up on the top side of the project, over near the entrance to the Performing Arts Center. So if people park up in the Target parking lot, PAC lot, that area, you will be, have the chance to walk through the project as soon as the ribbon's cut. So, with that, any questions?
Okay, again, Wednesday, December 4th, 3:00 p.m. Counsel, any questions? Okay, I hope to see everybody there. It's something, I want to make sure, and EJ, maybe stay close, I want everybody to understand that the funding that we got from this did not come from the general fund or even capital funds from the City of Federal Way. The money we got from both the state, at $2.5 million, came from grant funding for transportation improvement projects and right-of-way improvements. We got $500,000 from King County that can only be used for infrastructure and pedestrian improvements. Had we not used those monies, we would have had to give it back to both King County and the state, and literally, this is an investment in making sure that where there's once a wall, now there will be a place for us to congregate. And, well, I would highly suggest anybody, to everybody in town, to drive over there, to come to the event. I think that for many, many, many years to come, this will be a gathering location, it'll be a focal point, and it's not just a set of steps, it is, we're creating a sense of place in our downtown, and this is infrastructure. And so, with that, Councilmember Duclair, do you want to say something?
Yes, I do, because I do a mile walk over there every Wednesday, and I have watched those stairs being built, and it's glad to see it done. And I hope, I hope people will use it in the right way. I do get concerned that we might have homeless people sleeping on them in the night, but even so, I think it finishes off the project, the whole thing, the PAC and everything else over there. I think that's just, instead of just having grass or soil, we have a place where people can sit and watch things and see a lot around the city, because up there, you've got a view of all the buildings and everything, and it's just relaxing.
And the mountain?
And I find it very relaxing doing my walk, because I get rid of everything in my mind, and I just enjoy the scenery, and a lot of time in the summertime, watching the families play, and in the wintertime, too, you know, we see different groups of people there.
I should note that I think, actually, we did use about $126,000 of real estate excise tax money, which is not general fund money, it was, real estate excise tax money can only be used for capital funds. So, I should say that, that I think was about that number.
Yeah, those are the three funding sources that we used. The mobility grant from Washington State DOT that was through King County, LIFT, which is a local infrastructure financing tool, which is a million dollars a year that can only be used in the downtown. It's a grant program that we applied to a couple of years ago, and we're successful with it, and we get a million dollars a year for the next several years. And then, REIT, like the mayor mentioned, that can only be used for infrastructure.
Councilmember Copeland, then back to Councilmember Duclair.
Yeah, I just also want to say that, really appreciate the Public Works staff for the value engineering process they went through. When we had this, when this project first came online and was bid out, the price, the costs for those bids was substantially higher than our budget, and I think the staff certainly understood that there was desire on the part of, I think, the majority of the council to complete this project, and basically said, "We're going to work this out, we're going to find a way to make this work," basically, with the funding that is available from the state, county, and eventually through REIT funding as well. Also wanted to say that, you know, I think that it's really important for us, for everyone in the community to know that that ramp and stairway will be well-lit. It's, I think, one of those things, there's always going to be a concern about how something can be misused, but anything can be misused, and it will also be patrolled. We do have a substation right there, just a few feet away. So, I think that as that area gets activated, and we're going to see it continue to be activated, whether it's the PAC, the park, the parking structure, or the eventual development that's going to occur in that area, this is going to just blend into our community and not, and really be a great addition. And again, I also want to congratulate both Public Works staff and former councils for taking the opportunity to get the funding that the LIFT program has offered to cities like ours. There were, this project was available to many cities, only nine cities in the state of Washington actually exercised the effort to get the funding, and we were one of them. So, I appreciate their foresight. We've had multiple projects, most of which are underground or infrastructure in that area, so we've been doing this for years. This is really the biggest and the most high-profile project we've done utilizing these funds. But again, these funds have been used for years, and it's certainly been a benefit to the city as we've been able to improve that area to accommodate the growth that is coming. So, thank you.
Great.
Okay, and, you know, you just addressed a point that I wanted to bring up, because the people I've talked to ask me how much it's costing and who's paying for it. I think it needs to be put in the paper, and it'd also be announced when you're there, how this was paid for. It did not come out of our general fund. It was money that we got from other sources to do this, so you can clear the minds of people out there, because when they look at this, they want to know, "How much is this costing, and where's the city getting the money for it?"
Right, which they have every right to know.
Yes.
And I think that's a good idea. We'll make sure that we get that out once again and make sure it's clear.
Get it on our website, but also see if you can get an article in the paper about it, and invite people to come to the opening, okay?
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm reminded of back when I was a kid, and Pacific Avenue in Tacoma was being, so to speak, rebuilt, and it was imagined of what it can be, and I'm sure we all remember Pacific Avenue in Tacoma, right? And so, this, to me, is just incredibly exciting, and one of the things that hasn't been mentioned yet is, you know, we've talked about putting a university, right, in that general vicinity.
Right.
So, just having a university, having the arts, having the park, and just connecting all those things, there's just a value to that. And I think we all want a downtown that we can pride ourselves in, that looks great, and that brings people together on so many different fronts, and that's what this vision is all about. And I'm really just excited about the future, and even with light rail, you know, when that comes in, it's going to be a bustling downtown, at least that's what we're striving to do. So, and the fact that a senior citizen housing is going to go relatively close just tells me that there's going to be more people coming into our downtown and enjoying those wonderful amenities. So, I'm just really excited about, again, the future and also what we're doing right now with our downtown. Thank you.
Mayor, and give the date and time again, so people...
You bet. It'll be Wednesday, December 4th at 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, December 4th, 3:00 p.m. We're going to put some boards around town, and we'll make sure we get it out wide and far. So, come one, come all. Anything else, EJ?
What?
All right, thank you. John, before I come to talk about, before we go to that, we do have Betty Taylor and Sonia Freeman in the audience. Can you both come up to the podium real quick? We've got, Son... Come on up. Actually, no, Sonia is the widow of our former council member, Roger Freeman, and our friend, my dear friend. And we just actually recently had a, come on up, Betty and Sonia, and we just recently had a meeting in my office, and we were talking about ways to honor our former colleague and our former state representative, and we're forming a committee. So, Sonia and Betty, do you want to talk about that and what our plans are right now?
It's an honor and a privilege to be able to do something in Roger Freeman's memory. It's also an honor and a privilege that it could be open, and the community, you know, it's a community thing, it's not just a one person.
Yeah.
You know, but it's a community thing. It is so important for minds to come together and with the same vision, the same goal, and we work it out, and it's going to be really good.
Thank you. Sonia, did you want to say anything? Well, we're honored by your participation, Sonia, and, you know, just by all your contributions and by Roger's, and, you know, we, because of his contribution to our community, and we were talking, we're putting together a working group comprised of, at the heart of it will be Sonia, and, I mean, you know, literal heart, Sonia and Betty. We're also going to have Sean and Greg Berusso, who have been so involved in the Diversity Commission, we're friends with Roger, Jim Grayson, Jim Grayson, and, help me...
Martin Lawrence.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, and Deputy Mayor Honda, and, what's that?
Deborah Robertson.
And Deborah Robertson, yeah, that's right. So, that committee will start working and having some conversations. It's going to be a working group meeting here at City Hall, and I'm sure, you know, all folks are welcome, and we'll make sure we get word out if anybody wants to participate in those. And we're going to have some discussions, and, you know, we were talking about manners or ways in which we can honor Roger, and, you know, instead of, I think Betty hit the nail on the head, instead of one person just deciding or coming up with an idea, we're going to get a group together and have a conversation about this. So, thank you so much for your willingness to serve, really appreciate it. All right, thank you. Okay, so...
Mayor Farrell?
Yes, yes.
It's a monitor.
Yes.
We were also tasked about coming up with policies for the city.
Uh-huh, yes. Yeah, I think that, you know, so I think what the Deputy Mayor is saying is that when she and I spoke, I think it is important to come up with some policies about how we go about naming things and about, you know, moving forward. How do we, how do we make those recognitions, and how do we make sure it's equitable and represents, you know, our community? And so, that was one of the things that Deputy Mayor Honda wanted to make sure that we, and I share and concur with that, that moving forward, we should make sure that we have some standards on how to, you know, how to proceed. And, you know, I think the school district has some guidelines like that as well. Susan, does that pretty much, or Deputy Mayor, does that pretty much capture it?
Yes, because we want to have a policy moving forward that in the future, like something else, then that's how it's doing.
Okay, okay, I got you. You're kind of cutting out there a little bit, but we got it. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right, now let's move on. John Hutton, Sonia and Betty, thank you so much, really appreciate it. Okay, now moving on to the holiday tree lighting at Town Square Park. John Hutton, our illustrious Parks Director, go for it.
Illustrious, thank you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor, and Mayor and Members of Council. I want to invite the entire community out to our annual holiday tree lighting. That will be this year on December 7th at 4:00. Please be a little early, or you'll go on Santa's naughty list, we don't want to be there. So, Santa will be arriving with Mrs. Claus on a fire truck at 4:00, so please be there. And we have a wide range of activities planned, including the Federal Way Youth Symphony, Children's Dance Theater Nutcracker piece, Sherwood Forest Elementary Choir, Desna Choir, Thomas Jefferson's Drum Line, and then we will, and they will do a drum roll before the mayor or his designee decides to throw the switch, and the lights will come on, and then TJ's Drum Line will conclude the event with their raucous performance. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be there for photo ops, that's all free, and the Arts Commission booth will be there serving hot chocolate and cookies, and Desna will be serving authentic Russian tea. So, it is a great event, it is all packed into one hour, so nobody freezes to death out there. The mayor is in charge of the weather this year, so we'd like about 50 and clear, that would be great, sir.
And John's in charge of making sure the light goes on.
I am, yes.
Exactly. You want to tell them about our little bit of, or was that...
Not even a little bit.
Not a little bit.
No, I was joking. We've had a couple of foibles over there, we decided to enlist technology, and it was a fantastic idea until everybody turned on their phones...
Yeah.
...to take great pictures, which killed our Wi-Fi strength, and so the lights didn't come on, and if you want to see a fat guy have a heart attack, I'm your guy, when they don't come on. So, it's definitely a fun thing, we're going straight analog this year, should not have any trouble at all, and if we do, we won't.
Just imagine 500 people gathered around a tree, counting it down, and the light's not coming on. Awkward.
And then just imagine being me, yeah.
Exactly. But it came on, you know, those, I think, 10 or 15 seconds felt like about an hour.
At least.
Yeah, exactly. So, yeah, we'll go analog, old school.
Absolutely.
These are hard things to forget. They leave a mark, don't they?
Almost impossible, even with counseling.
Yes, yes.
That's right, that's right.
But I think, you guys went analog last year, though, didn't you?
Yes.
Yes, so it actually worked great last year.
It did.
And I think we should remember that.
I know, I know, right? Right? Why am I bringing this up? I don't even know.
Yeah.
All right, just because it's fun to tease John. Him and the Minnesota Vikings, I don't know what's going on there. All right. Councilmember Duclair, your light's on, did you want to say anything?
Oh, no, sorry.
All right, all right. Okay, John, anything else?
Nope, looking forward to seeing you all, it'll be a great show.
Okay.
A lot of fun, so, thank you.
Very good, okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay, all right, now we've got online open house for South Federal Way Visioning and Cooperation with Sound Transit, November 20th. We've got Ryan Medlin, Senior Planner. Ryan?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, and members of the public here tonight. I'm Ryan Medlin from Community Development, and I'm here to announce an online open house that starts tomorrow and is a partnership effort between the city and Sound Transit. The online open house is a first phase in a project we're calling Framing City South that is an outreach effort to obtain community feedback on the future of South Federal Way in recognition of the light rail that's planned under Sound Transit's Tacoma Dome Link Extension. There's also a policy connection, because our comprehensive plan strategy implementations currently call for this area to be considered for sub-area plans or similar planning efforts, and this project's an opportunity to evaluate that, as well as all of our other policies and regulations ahead of some coming major infrastructure projects. So, the area and the project's scope is this one based on one-half mile from the three Tacoma Dome Link Station alternatives, as identified by the Sound Transit Board. The map you're going to end up seeing on the website, when it goes live, is going to be a little bit different than this, but it's the, this is the core area from 344th, just north of the Walmart, to south to 359th. So, this is the area the project is going to be focusing on, and the goal of our project is first to obtain a community vision for the area, again, in recognition of the light rail, but also just in a general moving-forward sense to help planning staff really work towards implementing something that the community wants to see in the area. So, that's what we mean by identifying some guiding principles for our future efforts. And then, we hope that the final report will identify some preliminary strategies to set a path forward in addition to setting a vision itself. So, as far as the project's schedule, as I mentioned, this online open house is Phase 1. Work is expected to continue through 2020, when the final report is to be completed. What we, generally what we're planning to do is gather some initial information from this first online open house, summarize what we hear, try to see if we find any of those vision statements or guiding principles. statements or guiding principles, and then go back for a second online open house, which we're currently planning to do around February, and check back with the community. Did we hear you right? What did we miss? And then that will really help us try and be confident in that final report that we put out. So, in summary, the event I'm here announcing tonight is a website, online open house, and survey that goes live probably late afternoon tomorrow on November 20th. The survey will actually be open through December 15th. We're trying to be flexible on that end date and really make sure we have ample opportunity for people to respond. And in that time, both city staff and the consulting firm Enviro Issues will be looking to spread the word in the community and try and get as many people to respond as possible. So, with that, and the, on December 4th for our Planning Commission, we're planning to do a workshop with them as well, just as an opportunity for people to find out more information in person. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions you have about that project and.
All right. Any questions, Council? All right. Thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Johnson, you want to talk about that issue you raised?
So, just wanted to update everyone. Last Thursday, the 14th, we had the grand opening of the Federal Way Youth Action Team Think Lab. And so, this is a resource center for our youth, designed to offer breakthrough solutions and innovative services, particularly around education, diversion, youth violence prevention, and education and entrepreneurship. And so, I just want to thank colleagues on the council. Obviously, last year, we went through a lengthy budget process, and the city did commit funding to the Youth Action Team as well as King County Best Starts for Kids and United Way. And so, I just want to thank my colleagues on the council. It was exciting to have about 40 to 50 people there. We had councilmembers Copeng and Martin Moore as well, and a few school board members and Dr. Campbell. So, thanks to the community that came out. It's going to be a great opportunity for our youth to get the support that they need. Starting in January, it'll be open every day from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and then Saturdays from 9:00 to 4:00. So, it's located right on Dash Point and Pack Highway, across from the Shell Gas Station there. So, again, thanks to the community for coming out and to the council.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, recent events here in community. We had the Veterans Day Celebration at Todd Beamer High School on Saturday, November 9th. That was a great opportunity to hear great speakers. Actually, Representative Christina Reeves spoke, as well as myself. And it was just a great, you know, put on by Kiwanis and the Historical Society and the Kiwanis Historical Society and Kiwanis. And it was a great event and great to see all those ROTC, Air Force ROTC students out of Todd Beamer. It was a great day. Then we had the Federal Way Chamber of Commerce Gala at the Woodbridge Corporate Park, the building formerly known as the Warehouser Headquarters. That was a great event. Again, same night, November 9th. We had the Veterans Day Celebration at Brookdale Foundation House. Myself and the deputy mayor were there. And it's always great to see folks at the Foundation House, beautiful facility, and a great opportunity to talk about our nation and honoring our veterans. So, that's my report. And now let's go on to the council committee reports. We've got FedRec or Finance, Councilmember DuKlo.
Yes, our next meeting is next Tuesday at 4:30, and we will be in the Hilebus Room.
Now, in regard to Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, Councilmember Moore.
Who am I to?
Exactly.
That's right. Council, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. City staff is working with King County staff from the Aquatic Center and the Seattle Sports Commission on the applications for men's and women's swimming and diving championship for 2023 through 2026. Speaking about swimming, in just about 30 days, December 10th through the 15th, the Speedo Junior Nationals will be held at the Aquatic Center, expecting nearly 10,000 people for this event. It brings some of the finest young swimmers in the nation, possibly future Olympians, to Federal Way. Additionally, in mid-January, starting January 16th specifically, yet another swimming event, the 44th Annual Washington Open, will once again be at the Aquatic Center. It brings hundreds of competitors to Federal Way from youth to masters. Then, the rotation of collegiate swimming and diving champions will start. Following that, the Northwest Conference, including Pacific Lutheran and the University of Puget Sound, begins on February 13th through the 14th, I'm sorry, February 13th for four days. The PAC 12 Championships, 14 Days of Fun in Federal Way, that's right, Fun in Federal Way, begins February 26th with the ladies' swimming first, followed by the men's and women's diving championships. Then, the men's will begin on March 4th. Then, on March 11th, the NCAA Men's and Women's Diving Championships begin. Again, I want to thank city and county staff for working so hard to bring this event here. It is, it had been in Flagstaff, Arizona, but the pitch to bring it here was successfully made. While not televised, you will be witness to many of the athletes that will be trying to get to the U.S. Dive Trials in June and on the U.S. Olympic team. This is a great event for Federal Way. Again, congratulations. This is exciting. The Federal Way Aquatic Center, quite frankly, brings a lot of opportunities for Federal Way. And at the end of the day, it benefits our restaurants. It benefits our small businesses. It helps our hotels as well. So, it's very crucial to have that Federal Way Aquatic Center, and it's been a real gold here for Federal Way. Additionally, but not least, Mr. Mayor, it is, it appears that, I may not get my Christmas wish. I was hoping I would get my Christmas wish of changing the name to this committee, but you know, we just don't give up. I tell my students that I subfor in our school district that you're persevering no matter what. And so, it appears that in January, we're going to have something to the FedRec Committee in terms of name change for this committee. So, that's something that's, we're thinking of a name that is going to be more relatable to people, like Federal Way Tourism and Visitors Committee. I think people will understand what that is all about. And at the end of the day, that's the purpose of why we're changing the name. It'll have the same functions exactly because of the RCW states that we have to. It'll have the very same duties. So, that's the last item I will report on, and with that, I will end my report. Thank you.
All right, great. Land use, Councilmember Camp, Copeng.
Haven't found my names today, huh?
I know, exactly. No net, it's no net.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
For land use, we actually had a good meeting, and, let's see, we had two, four, six, eight, nine items on the consent agenda for approval tonight, and then a few for business as well. But again, so much of what we do as a city happens in our committees. And the fact that those are now on YouTube is, I think, going to continue to help the citizens to understand the process that we go through, the review periods that are the thorough review that occurs at the committee level through various stages. Every one of these items has been brought before the committee multiple times at various stages. So, when it finally gets the consent agenda, it's almost like we're saying it's over the line and we're not really talking about it, but there's been many conversations. And these are well-vetted ideas that have support of the council and the staff by the time they get here. If they don't, we call them out and we vote on them separately. But anyway, definitely looking forward to getting the consent agenda passed and moving these projects forward. The next land use transportation committee meeting will be on, what, December 2nd at 5:00 right here in council chambers. So, look forward to seeing you, those of you that attend here, or we'll see you on the video. Thank you.
All right. And now, Parks, Public, Councilmember Johnson, for Parks, Recreation, Human Services, Public Safety Committee.
Still got to work on that title.
Exactly.
So, we had our meeting last week, and one of the items that we really discussed this time was Police Chief had a burglary and theft report. So, a lot of folks in the community have been concerned around, rightfully concerned around burglary and theft in our community. And so, he gave a great presentation around the numbers and what we're doing to combat that. We also talked about panhandling, and we did a review of the panhandling ordinance and how we can make sure that we are not allowing and really strengthening our ordinance on aggressive panhandling. So, we had a good discussion on that. Shorter, shorter meeting than typical, but definitely some great topics. And our next Parks meeting will be Tuesday, December 10th, right here in council chambers at 5:00 p.m.
Okay. Public Issues Committee, Councilmember Sepha Dawson.
Thank you, Mayor, and I have no report.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Honda.
Hello. So, I'd like to congratulate Chase Church for his many years of service, and I look forward to hearing what he's doing in retirement and how fun he's having with his grandson. I'd like to thank Councilmember Tran for visiting our sister city in Korea. He's over there now. He delivered a letter from the mayor and deputy mayor and council, and he also delivered some gifts from the city council to their city council. So, thank you, Councilmember Tran. FedRec will be meeting in the Hilebus Room for their next meeting and will not be available on YouTube. And the veterans program was also sponsored by the Federal Way Struck and Miss Club for the first time. So, it was the Historical Society of Federal Way, Kiwanis Club, and the Federal Way Struck and Miss Club. And that's it.
Okay, great. Okay, citizen comment. These, we've got one, two, three, four comments. David Taylor, excuse me, David Toyer, Toyer Strategic Consultant, consulting, then Felicia Wilson, then Linda Coachmar, and then Jack Walsh. David?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Members of Council, David Toyer. With Toyer Strategic Consulting, I am the consultant that's working with and representing the initiators of the annexation that's on your council business agenda tonight. I just wanted to introduce myself, encourage you to support that effort to move forward, and also let you know that I would be available for questions, should you have any of the initiators. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, Felicia Wilson.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and city, members of the city council. My name is Felicia Wilson. I am the new Regional Library Manager for the Southwest Region of the King County Library System, which includes two libraries in your, in your area, the Federal Way and the Federal Way 320th Library. So, I really just wanted to introduce myself to council and also talk about our new Federal Way Library IDX Makerspace that is currently being constructed at Federal Way. This Makerspace will be a free workshop for people of all ages. There will be, I'm sorry, 3D printers, robotics, circuitry, and we will also have a soundproof music and video production area for people to actually work and create on. And we're very excited about this new Makerspace. We're going to have a soft opening in January, and I would love to have you all show up for our grand opening of our new Makerspace.
That'd be great. I just, you make sure we've got the details.
Okay, I will. Thank you so very much.
All right. Linda Coachmar, Councilmember-elect.
Thank you, Mayor and Deputy Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers. I look forward to coming on board. I have a lot of ideas. They really turn me loose. I'm used to, I'm used to testifying in Olympia, and I'm used to lobbying in DC. And so, I'm hoping that we can, there's a lot of pots of money out there that we can access that aren't really on your legislative agenda. So, turn me loose. I want to know the priorities that you have. I want to know the problems that we have, and I want to come up with some ideas for you. And I also want to really work on federal, the federal funding. There's a lot of money out there, and you'd be shocked to hear what other cities receive, and that we should be part of. If you're not on the agenda, or if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So, that's what I really want to do. But that's not what I came to talk about. You know, I just want to say, we had a lot of people who were, and by the way, I want to go to the library and use their 3D printer. My grandson just brought home a little project he did, and it's really cool. But I want to just say that we had a lot of passionate people on both sides of the debate on Proposition 1. And so, I'm taking a neutral stand, but what I want to say is that, you know, our voters have voted twice, and that I really think, you know, it was an advisory vote only. And I really think that we need to, my position would be that we need to respect the wishes of the voter. And I believe that you all would believe that as well. I remember that both sides of the aisle, as I recall, were saying that we should respect the wishes of the voter. And so, just wanted to say that, and I'm looking forward to coming on board, and thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, and Jack Walsh.
Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, and your, wherever you may be, and members of the city council, thank you for letting me speak for just a moment. I first would like to commend the citizens of Federal Way, the residents of Federal Way, for very wisely voting on Proposition 1 in opposition to allowing pot shops here in our fair city. I think it was a very, very wise vote. And I want to thank the city council in advance for honoring that vote. I think that this vote proved, those who wanted to bring pot shops in, it was the marijuana industry, the cannabis industry, they funded the campaign with nearly $90,000. Those of us opposed to it, we put together a little less than $3,000. And that 90,000 versus 3,000, and was kind of David and Goliath, but the residents of Federal Way saw what we should do. And I once again want to thank them for keeping in mind the message that the pot shops would send to youth and realizing that the little minute amount of revenue is not worth that risk. And so, thank you.
All right.
Council and to the residents.
Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it. Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to comment? All right. Thank you very much. I always say it's the most important part of the meeting, to hear from the people that we work for. All right, now the consent agenda. These items have gone through committee and can be passed all at once. I will read each of the items, and then I'll ask council if an individual member would want to pull an item for separate consideration. So, item 6, 6A, Minutes for the November 5, 2019 Regular and Special Meeting Minutes. Item B, Public Safety Testing, PST, Third Amendment. Item C, Brook Lake Center Connector Project Acceptance. Item D, Variable Land Use Control, 85% Design Report and Authorization to Bid. Item E, South 348th Entrance Sign, 85% Design Report and Authorization to Bid. Item F, Complete Streets ADA Upgrades, 85% Design Report and Authorization to Bid. Item G, Citywide Adaptive Signal Control System, ITS Improvements, Phase 1 and 2 and Phase 3 Bid Results. Item H, Transportation Demand Management Implementation Agreement with WashDOT, WSDOT. Item I, Commute Trip Reduction Program Implementation Agreement with King County. Item J, City Center Access Phase 1 Environmental Process Update Preferred Alternative. Item K, Acceptance of Grant Offered by the State Department of Commerce, Engrossed House, Second Substitute House Bill 1923. Item L, Citywide Greenway Plan Bid Update and Request to Re-Bid. Council, after having those items read, is there any item you would want pulled for separate consideration? Hearing none. Deputy Mayor Honda, all the way from across the country, do you have a motion?
Yes. I move approval of items A through L on the consent agenda. And Lydia seconded it.
And so did Councilmember Tran, all the way from Korea.
Very good. All right, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have unanimous vote, the hard way. All right, so that approves. Okay, now we move on to item 7. Let's see, we've got the public hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing before we have Chase Donnelly, our finance manager, who will give a report. But please consider the matter open. It's actually not noted on our agenda, but for purposes of the record, it's incumbent upon me as the mayor to quote, "open the public hearing." With that, first, we will start with a staff report by Chase Donnelly, our finance manager. This is continued from November 5th, the 2019 meeting, for the 2019 and 2020 Biennial Budget Adjustment and 2020 Property Tax Levy, as required by RCW 35A.34. Now, our finance director, Adeyere Rulu, who is out of town right now, previously went through this. But I asked Scott to go through this, just, excuse me, I asked Chase to go through this, just real briefly, to make sure that, if anybody had any questions. But he'll do so in a pretty quick fashion. So, with that, Chase?
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council and public. This evening, I'll be presenting the 2019-20 Proposal by Neil Budget Adjustment, on behalf of our finance director. on behalf of our finance director. So, I'm going to just go through some of these items that we went through about two weeks ago. We have to make an adjustment at the end of the first year. Some background, we've had a number of meetings, the adopted budget, the amended, and then we've brought this before FedRAC, and then the proposed hearing two weeks ago. Some of the budget factors to consider are the city's fund balance policy that's set by council per Resolution 18732. All funds are within the required reserve level. The general funds at the required reserve level of 9 million, street fund at 500,000, strategic reserve fund at 3 million, to name a few of the funds. To touch a little bit on our interfund loans, the PAC operation fund has a 500,000 interfund loan that through this adjustment, we're forgiving that loan. The PAC construction is a $5 million left after this adjustment because we're paying $1 million of REIT towards it, as well as a grant that we received or that we're expected to receive. So, that's going to be bonded at 5 million. That project was approximately a $33 million project, and we only have $5 million left to bond on that project. We have a few outstanding general obligation bonds at the city. One is the community center at 9.9 million. And we pay approximately about 800,000 annually out of REIT, which are restricted funds for capital purposes. We have target property of 6 million, of which we'll pay approximately 500,000 in 2020. We have SCORE that's being rebonded at 12.9 million, and PAC Capital Project at 5 million that we just discussed, that's being bonded as well. This is the actual Exhibit C that would be in the budget ordinance that will be presented later. And this outlines each of the individual funds. It has the beginning fund balance for the fund, the revenues and expenditures budgeted, the beginning fund balance. So, beginning fund balance plus revenues minus expenditures equals your beginning fund balance for the following year, plus revenues minus expenditures equals your ending fund balance. This is where I said each of the individual funds are within the required reserve level policy. So, the general fund, for example, at 9 million, 10,171 is within the required amount of 9 million. Same with the street fund, 516,823, within the 500,000. Community Center has a reserve policy of 1.5 million. It's within the 1.5 million. Utility Tax has 1.5 million, within the required policy of 1.5 million. And Strategic Reserve Fund has a reserve policy of 3 million, and we just built this back up. It had been originally used to repurchase the target property, and through this budget adjustment, we were able to build it back up to the 3 million. This includes some of the other funds that we budget, capital project funds, which are usually restricted funds, enterprise funds, which also have restricted funding sources, such as Surface Water Management Fund that has surface water management fees and can only be used within the Surface Water Management Fund. And then, internal service funds, which are funded by other funds to service like information technology, mail and duplication, fleet and equipment, et cetera. Some of the proposed major changes in the general fund include the public defender contract increase in 2019 of 139,160, code compliance supplies and nuisance abatement services of 45,000, election and hearing examiner cost increases of 47,000, adding a copper wire alarm system to Celebration Park and Still Lake Annex of 58,200, hazardous tree work that needs to be done by the Parks Department, 30,000, sand for restoring our natural turf at some of our parks of 70,000, Sacagawea left station repairs of 30,000, and transfer of funding to PAC operations in addition to the amount that was already transferred. And this does include the 500,000 of the forgiving of the interfund loan, where we have to transfer the 500,000 into the fund that we had discussed two weeks ago. And then replenishing the strategic reserve of 294,461, which brings the total of the strategic reserve fund up to 3 million. For 2020, some of the general fund items are the public defender contract increase of 191,396, the new rental housing program of 100,000, which includes staff time, the new community development after-school program services of 106,875, legal contract cost increases of 130,000, and IT, cell, data, radio, and email security services of 84,500, and then the 800,000 transfer into the PAC fund for operations for 2020. Some of the major changes in the non-general fund include repair to the streetlight system for copper wire theft that's been stolen for 30,000 within the street fund. Transfer of funding to general fund of minus 413,394 from the utility tax fund has to do with utility tax revenue that's decreasing due to cellphone decreases due to the location of where people purchase their cellphones, as well as electricity and gas decreases due to not as cold weather. So, we've had to decrease that amount. That's primarily offset by community development permit and fee increases that have occurred in 2019. And so, we've been able to make up for the amount that we've had to decrease in the transfer of utility tax. The council chambers upgrade, you'll see on the next page that there's an increase. This is a decrease. It's primarily because it's going to be done in 2020. But that's out of the Special Contract Studies Fund, and that's a restricted fund that uses Comcast PEG fees. And they have to be used for a specific purpose, and so they can only be used on things like this. And the variable message signboard on South 348th is being paid for by lodging tax, which is also a restricted source and can only be used on specific items. Payment on the PAC interfund loan that I talked about earlier, the million here of REIT. REIT can only be used on capital projects, as the mayor mentioned earlier. And this is bringing down the interfund loan to the 5 million. So, this million plus money that's expected to be received from the Department of Commerce, bring that down to the 5 million interfund loan that would be bonded. This PAC operations expense, this just balances the PAC operation fund, so it's taking the expenditures from 1.9 million to 2.1 and includes already the transfer in of the funding that I had mentioned earlier. This is the item that has been added since the last presentation, the PAC manager contribution, equipment transition costs. This was the item that was discussed two weeks ago that has to do with the 100,000 that Spectra paid to the city that can be used for one-time equipment purchases, as well as transition costs with Spectra coming onboard to the PAC. And so, we've budgeted 55,980 in 2019 and the remainder in 2020. This is CDBG grant-funded expenditure, so this is human services. This is to basically clean up and bring our grants received to the amount of expenditures that occur within that fund. And so, this is various projects. This is basically a cleanup item to, we're receiving federal grant funds, and we're bringing the expenditures to match up to those amounts. This is the Holly turf replacement of 95,000 paid out of the Parks Reserve Fund. Most of this project had already been budgeted. It's, we're reconciling it. Over 400,000 for this project came from between the school and King County grants. And so, this project is being done. Transportation capital projects of 8.4 million, this is also partly a cleanup item. Most of these expenditures are funded by grants. And so, projects like the adaptive traffic control center project, SR 509, Southwest to 312th Street are examples of projects within this amount that we needed to rebudget the grant portion of the project and then budget the expense related to it. This Dumas Bay Temp Help Supplies and Services, this is an increase to the expenses for Dumas Bay, but the revenues for Dumas Bay are offsetting that, so the revenues are coming in. The Dumas Bay Center Fund's actually doing very well. Requires, I believe, 1.5 million within the reserve policy, and they have, as of, I think, September, around 1.6. Some of these items down below, this replacement of printers, of mobile and portable radios, police vehicles, parks mower, these are all funded by replacement reserves, which we collect money in these funds to replace items as they come due for replacement. So, it might have a seven-year lifecycle on it, and we collect those funds over a seven-year period, and then we're able to replace those items as they come replaceable. Police law and council security gates, 13,000, and City Hall Security Camera additions replacement, 26,000 out of the building reserve fund. So, these funds right here from IT down to building reserve, we collect reserves within these funds to replace items as they come replaceable. So, it's not usually an additional expense when they come due for replacement. Some of the major changes in non-general funds for 2020 include this utility tax reduction that I had mentioned on the other slide. Excuse me. So, we have to reduce this because utility taxes reducing. Here's the council chambers upgrade that I had mentioned on the previous slide as well. Special contract studies that is a restricted source. PAC operations expense to bring this whole, it goes from 1.9 million in the expense to 2.25 million. This is the other portion of the manager contribution for equipment costs of 100,000 that I mentioned on the previous slide. This is to true up the grant-funded expenditures with the grant revenue within the Community Development Block Grant Fund that's passed by the commission. This is the first debt payment on the PAC construction bond that's being bonded of the 5 million, of 550,000. And again, Dumas Bay Temp Help Supplies and Services, we're increasing, as well as increasing the revenue to offset it, and replacement of police vehicles funded by fleet replacement reserves. So, at this time, I can answer any questions and consider first reading of the 2019-20 biennial budget adjustment ordinance and consider moving it to December 3, 2019 for second reading and final adoption. I also have the presentation right after this on the property tax. So, if we wanted to wait for questions after the property tax presentation, we could do that, or we could do questions now.
Council, any questions? No?
Before you, I'm going to be presenting the City of Federal Way 2020 Property Tax Levy Ordinance. Required by, oop, required by RCW 8455.120. A single public hearing must be held on this matter, is basically what that says. And then additionally, we have to identify the increase in terms of both dollars and percentage. And so, I do that on this next slide. So, on November 5, we had the first public hearing. Today is November 19, the single public hearing where I'm doing the presentation. The limit factor for property tax in the city is lesser of 1% or rate of inflation. And the rate of inflation this year was higher than 1%, so we're able to take the 1% on property tax if it's passed by council. The old rate is .97350 per 1,000 of assessed valuation. The new proposed rate as an estimate is .93395 per 1,000 of assessed valuation. On a $100,000 home, that's approximately $93. So, just to give some context of that, the percent increase of revenue over last year is .73% when you calculate the numbers with new construction. The total property tax increase is 80,490, and then new construction added on top of that. This ordinance will be certified and sent to King County by December 2, 2019, which is the day before, which we've done in the past typically. And with that, we can consider first reading of the 2020 Property Tax Levy Ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, Councilmember Copeng?
Chase?
Yeah.
Can you go back to the other slide, the last slide on the property tax?
Yes.
I understand it as a council member, but I think that it would be good for the public to understand how this works. I mean, we've got a cap of 1%, but our rate per thousand is going down, so it looks like it doesn't make sense. So, if you could just walk through that for us, just so the community understands how this works, I think it'd be helpful. Thank you.
So, the 1% is a 1% increase on revenue received from the prior year. So, if there's a decrease on the rate, but the values of homes have increased, the 1% can be, the rate can be lower than 1% because to get to that 1%, you don't need as high of a rate when your values increase.
All right, council, anything else? All right, is there, thank you, Chase.
Yeah.
Oh, did you have a couple more?
Nope.
All right, is there anybody from the public who'd like to comment on this? Anybody from the public who'd like to comment? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing? Councilmember Duclow?
Yes, Mayor, I move to close the public hearing on the proposed 2019-2020 biennial budget adjustment and the 2020 property tax rate.
Second.
All right, a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's unanimously closed. All right, and then action will be taken under the ordinance section of the agenda. All right, thank you, Chase. Appreciate it. Okay, council business, acceptance of 10% petition to annex a portion of the urban growth area into the City of Federal Way. Staff report from Doc Hanson, our planning manager. Doc?
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, first of all, I'd like to say I appreciate your beard, Councilmember Copeng. A little bit. Tonight, very briefly, we're asking to request or accept 10% petition for annexation. The policy question, I'll get into the process here very shortly. The policy question is, should the city accept, deny, or modify the 10% petition that has been filed? There's been a petition that was filed, I received September 26, and a notice of intent to annex from William and Patty Pruitt. Owners of Parcel A, which is this parcel right here, represents 16% of the total land value. The 10% is all that's necessary to submit the petition. The total proposed area for the seven parcels is 24 acres. If you'll notice, this is 320th I-5. It's just across 320th. The urban growth boundary goes around to this area. It's east of I-5 in this location. If annexed, the property is proposed to be sold and are sold to and used by the Pape Group, which is a Kenworth service and sales facility. This is the pre-annexation conference of plan designations. The area that we're talking about right now is right here, and it's prezone in the urban growth area is for commercial business. Right now, the uses on the properties are two single, excuse me, three single-family units, one duplex, and the three vacant lots. units, one duplex, and the three vacant lots. The petition for the annex, I'm going through the process here in terms of, because it took us a long time to figure out exactly what this process is going to be because the city hasn't been dealing with an annexation since 2005. One was brought up in 2008 and was dropped. This is the first one. Those previous annexation attempts were at the same piece of property, but they were under, they had different proposals. They had more land that was involved in them, but this is the process that we go through required by the state. The applicant meets with the city officials and staff, and the applicant submits the 10% petition. And then City Council holds a public meeting, which is tonight, except deny the petition. This is where we're at. If the council accepts the 10%, then what you're doing is you're giving the applicant the permission to go forward and consider a 60% petition. The 60% means the 60% of the valuation of the property, not 60% of the property. If council decides to accept the 60% petition, then we'll hold a public hearing. After the public hearing, notice of intention to annex is submitted to the Boundary Review Board, and it's not submitted to the Boundary Review Board until that time. The BRB holds a public hearing, and if they approve it, there's no appeals. It comes back to the City Council for annexation and approval of the ordinance. Now, it's very important to note that this is part of council business because the motion tonight and the action tonight is not to approve or give any recommendation for annexation. It's just to accept the 10% petition so that you can move forward, give the applicant the opportunity to submit the 60% petition. It's, so your choices are to accept, modify, or not accept the 10%, but it's handled within this business. This isn't a hearing. And again, it's not a vote to annex this property. So the action required is will the city accept, reject, will the city adopt an interim or initial comprehensive plan and zoning map designations. We looked at this and pondered this question. Because it's already pre-zoned, a business, commercial zone, we don't have to go back through a re-zone unless the council wishes to, to do so. You can accept the annexation under a commercial business zone. And will the city require the annexed area to assume the proportion of existing city indebtedness? Mayor's recommendation is to accept the 10% petition and that the, the council require the assumption of properties proportionate share of indebtedness. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
All right. Any questions, counsel? All right. Thank you, Doc.
Mayor, we have some questions.
All right. Deputy Mayor Honda?
Yeah, it's Lydia. Thank you for the presentation, Doc. My question is, are the property owners willing to sell their property at this point, or do we not know what kind of agreement they have?
We, we don't know the agreement. We don't know who is in the position of, of selling the property. That isn't something that we will be doing, dealing with. We will be looking at the owners, ownership at the time of the 60% petition. But we don't know who the buyers are for the properties. And they, as far as I, I do not know whether there have been contracts on sales or not.
So if the property owner decides to not sell, can they petition not for this to not go through?
They, they can, they can appeal the 10% or the 60% petition. They have, they have the right for appeal. And they also have the right not to sign it, to sign the valuation of the 60%.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, Mayor. Is this okay?
All right. Okay. Go ahead.
I asked at the Land News meeting when this was asked, I asked the attorney, the city attorney there if, as you know, there's a piece of property there that King County has approved for a marijuana store. And I asked if that would increase the licenses in Federal Way from four to five if that, this property was annexed. And I didn't get an answer.
Ryan Colts?
I mean, off the top of my head, the licenses are by jurisdiction, so it shouldn't change the, the count of licenses allotted to the city. They would just have to pick a new site. Whoever owns that license in King County would have to find another site, assuming they sell the property.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
More?
Okay. All right. So any other questions? All right. Thank you, Doc. Motion, Councilmember Copang.
Yeah, I move to accept the proposed annexation petition, not require adoption of new zoning regulations, and require the proposed annexation's assumption of its proportional share of the existing city indebtedness.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. I heard three on the line and four here. That's seven oh. That's passed unanimously. Okay. Letter to FAA regarding, or should say, okay, letter to FAA regarding federal legislative agenda. And then also, that's related to item C, letter to congressional delegation regarding federal legislative agenda. So Bill, let's do both letters at the same time. If you could just address them both, and then we'll maybe even have a joint motion.
I will, I will do that. I'm trying to, things got scrambled here. There we go.
I know. We moved things around so people could see the, the steps.
That's good. Okay. Let's see here. So basically, this is, this is showing that though we're in suspension, we all still work together with the six cities and, and the port. So both items, 8A and 8B, are letters regarding the federal legislative agenda for both the FAA and our congressional delegations. And we're united with the port and with our cities that we work on no matter what, whether we're part of START or not. And then if both are approved, the mayor will sign both on behalf of the City of Federal Way. These are, these are issues that Yarden and then I were working on with the various cities. So this is the full fruition of working with Adam Smith, as Councilmember Copang and I were working on everything else. So the first letter is the letter to the federal FAA and basically, you know, urging them to move forward on noise abeyment and mitigation as stipulated in the 2018 Reauthorization Act. Of course, it's 2019, almost 20, so let's get rolling. And then urging them to reinvest in those failed FAA sound insulation pieces we talked about in our state agenda. And then, of course, implementing provisions about the existing noise standards, overfly noise impacts on, on public health, getting them more involved. And let's, let's work on all these things that we're working on locally. So that's, that's what goes to the FAA. You want to group these, though, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Okay. So then we'll move on to the next, the next letter is basically to our congressional delegations for this part of the southern airport zone, and then, of course, Des Moines, Burien, et cetera. So these, this congressional delegation's involved. And of course, once again, to have us say again that we support Adam Smith's Protecting Airport Communities in the Particle Emissions Act, Representative Stephen Lynch of Massachusetts Air Traffic Noise and Pollution Export Consensus Act, which Adam Smith is also a signee on. And then, of course, once again, secondary noise mitigation investments. For those that have failed, again, we need to take care of the people who need to get new packages because what happened basically was people got their packages, they failed, the contractors are long gone. And technology changes, and they, they weren't done the way they should be. And we see that all over with our neighbors to the north. And we don't want that to happen in Federal Way. And then more federal investments and policies. In other words, what are we going to do about other airports, other ways of transportation? In other words, you know, and I think the FAA is going to be open to this, too. So I feel a lot of cooperation. So basically, the two policy questions are, should the council approve the mayor signing both letters addressing these FAA and priorities with our congressional delegation with there? So in the mayor's recommendation, please approve the letters. Questions?
All right. Counsel? All right. Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a motion with respect to items B and C combined? Have you had a chance to review these letters?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Are you, go ahead.
So I can find them.
What's that?
I move approval of the proposed letter.
Take them individually. Actually, Deputy Mayor?
Yes?
Let's just do them individually. And actually, as far as signatures, it's not, it'd just be my signature. But as a courtesy to the council and in a respect for this council, I brought, before I signed it on behalf of the city, I wanted to make sure I had the blessing of the council before I moved forward. But it's not calling for the signature of the, exactly. It's not calling for the, I wanted to make sure that the council was consulted and approved before I sent the letters. But it's not calling for the signature. It's, it's actually, it's got signatory spots for each of the cities, and that would be me. So does that make sense, Susan? Or Deputy Mayor?
Yes. I have, yes, I have two motions. So I'll do the first, do you want me to do the first one and then immediately do the second one? Or are we going to vote on the first one and then do the second one?
What you, the last thing you just said. Well, one by one, please.
Okay. So I move approval of the proposed letter to the Federal Aviation Administration.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right. Passed unanimously. Okay. Now, Deputy Mayor, as to the second letter.
I move approval of the proposed letter to our congressional representative regarding the federal legislative agenda.
All right. It's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Opposed? All right. The matters passed unanimously. Bill, great work. Thank you very much. And thank you, counsel. Okay. Now, moving on to ordinances. First reading. Council Bill 769, amending Federal Way Revised Code Title 19, Division 3, mitigation and fees, adding new chapter SWM system development charges. Gee, I won't read it. I'll leave something for you to read, city clerk. First, we'll have a staff report from Teresa Thurlow, our surface water manager. And I will turn it over to you now. Teresa?
Good evening, Mayor, deputy mayor, council members, engaged members of the public. As discussed, I'm here to present the amendment of Title 19 to add a surface and stormwater system development charge. So the policy question before City Council tonight is should City Council adopt a proposed ordinance adding a new chapter to Title 19 Federal Way Revised Code relating to the assessment of surface and stormwater utility system development charges. We're going to shorten that to SDCs. So a little review about what the surface water utility is. First of all, it's a utility, just like your water, your power, your garbage. We provide a service through the city to basically reduce the flood on the street. We have the city's Clean Water Act compliance, water quality, and we also have habitat conservation and restoration. Tonight, we're particularly interested in the drainage system because basically that takes all the rainfall off of the street and transports it to local waterways. And to do that, we have infrastructure, and mostly that's pipes, faults, catch basins, various transport systems. And they, as you can see here, discharge it to, in this place, Joe's Creek. So what happens is when you have impervious surfaces, you have a change or an impact to your capacity in the system. And most utilities have a connection fee and impact fee for adding services or adding to the system. And we do not, actually. So tonight, we're talking a little bit about that. So in a case of something like the mall, the mall tries to redevelopment or changes their development. They have very little impervious system, they have very little pervious surfaces, so they would actually have very little impact to our system. In fact, the pipes that service the mall, I can walk through them standing up. They're very, very big. So, but that doesn't have anything for those areas that are not yet developed. And the development creates more impervious surfaces. And as you can see here, in 2007, this area was all forested, predominantly forested, I should say. And then in 2017, there was a big development that put in a lot of impervious surface here and another area right here. So that increased our rainfall runoff that goes into the system. So a system development charge is basically a one-time fee. It's paid at the time of development, and it provides an equity between existing and new customers. And it provides us with a source of funding so that as developers come in and we have growth, the impact to the system is borne by the developers and not by the ratepayers. So basically, this would be a charge to the developer for their request to, or their project for developing. So how would an SDC be applied? If I were this parcel right here and I wanted to add, let me go back here, and I wanted to add a, let's say, a building and some parking over here, well, basically, this area is now impervious surface. It's increased impervious surface, and it would be 13.75 ESUs. So the system development charge to this particular imaginary project would be about $13,000. And as you can see here, it's only charged on the increase in impervious surface. It's not charged on what's currently there. And then here's a comparison of SDCs in the area. Renton actually does it a little bit different, and theirs is a flat $1,900 fee, doesn't matter what you put in. But for a lot of the other areas, they are doing it the same way with an equivalent service unit. And as you can see here, we're actually on the low scale. That system development charge is based on our build-out ability. So we have a total build-out of X, and if a developer came in here and developed all of that build-out capability, this is what we think would be the charge to the developers for us to be able to mitigate those impacts. The capacity changes, as I said earlier, without the system development charge, it's actually the ratepayers who have borne this development impacts in the past. And I want to just give you a little bit of an idea of how much stuff costs. Basically, a project that adds about 20 linear feet of, say, 18 to 36-inch pipe is averaging a cost of $15,000. So it's not an inexpensive, it's definitely underground, and you don't see it, but it's definitely a fairly pricey infrastructure underneath the city streets carrying this water from the streets to the local waterways. A timeline for where we are right now, we had a consultant that we hired who has provided us with the calculations and the incentives for a system development charge. The public hearing was held with the Planning Commission, and it actually was continued and, continued, there it is, continued October 30. And at that time, the decision was to recommend adoption. We had a presentation in November 4 at Land News Transportation. The 21-day appeal from when it appeared in the publication is November 6. Tonight, here we are with the City Council public meeting for the first reading of the ordinance, and then second reading, and we would notify the newspaper. And I did leave off, we have to notify Commerce as well. I actually didn't include that in this timeline. So the options before council tonight is to forward the proposed ordinance to the December 3, 2019 City Council meeting for second reading and enactment, or do not forward the proposed ordinance and provide direction to staff. And the mayor does recommend option one, and I'm available for questions.
All right. Any questions for Teresa? Okay. Thank you, Teresa. Great job. Okay. All right. And citizen comment on this? Any citizen comment? All right. And then, would the city clerk please read the ordinance title?
Council Bill 769, amending Federal Way Revised Code Title 19, Division 3, mitigation and fees, adding new chapter, surface water management system development charges, an ordinance of the City of Federal Way, Washington, relating to the assessment of surface and stormwater utility system development charges, and adding a new chapter to Title 19 Federal Way Revised Code.
Okay. Let's see. Counselor Copang, you have a motion?
I- I do have a motion. Prior to the motion, though, I want to also add that the Land Use Transportation Committee unanimously approved this to move forward as well. I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the December 3, 2019 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
All right. Been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right. That's unanimous. Now, we're moving on to Council Bill 770, to the 2019 and 2020 budget adjustment. We've already had the staff reports on both of those items, or actually, you know, we've already, yes, on items B and C, we've already had the staff reports. Any citizen comment on the budget adjustment at this point? Any citizen comment? All right. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance title for Council Bill 770?
Council Bill 770, 2019-2020 budget adjustment, an ordinance of the city of Federalway, Washington, relating to amending the 2019-2020 bioneal budget.
Okay. And Councilmember Duclo, do you have a motion?
Yes. I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the December 3, 2019 council meeting for the second reading and enactment.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Opposed? All right. Matter passes unanimously. All right. Now, item C, Council Bill 771, the 2020 property tax levy. Again, we've already had our staff presentation. Is there any citizen comment? Hearing none. Would the city clerk please read that ordinance title?
Council Bill 771, 2020 property tax levy, an ordinance of the city of Federalway, Washington, relating to fixing the property tax amount for the year 2020.
All right. Councilmember Duclo, do you have a motion?
Yes. I move to forward the proposed ordinance to the December 3, 2019 council meeting for second reading and enactment.
Second.
It's been a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? All right. Matter passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We're on to council reports. Why don't we start with the folks on the telephone? Councilmember Tran, do you have anything to report?
I think he's gone.
Okay. Councilmember Tran, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Do you have anything to report?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. I will have a full report of my visit to our city, to the city when I come back at the next meeting, but I just want to relay a message from Mayor Sim, and that is, he would like to wish you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Honda, member of the council, and the city, the people of Federalway a Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Councilmember Asefa Dawson?
Hi, Mayor. I have nothing to report on. I just want to say thank you for having us on the phone. And unfortunately, we weren't there, but we're here doing and learning a lot of stuff. So just want to say thank you for having us participate in this manner.
Right.
And have Thanksgiving and have good faith.
It worked perfectly. So thank you for being a part of it. You didn't miss a vote. Okay. Deputy Mayor Honda, do you have a report?
Yes. I'd like to thank Jerry Lynn and Thomas for their assistance in helping us manage to attend a meeting from San Antonio. And I would like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And if you know someone in our community that doesn't have family or a place to go, please consider offering them some of your fellowship. Thank you.
Very well said, Susan. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Johnson?
No report tonight. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Copeng?
Want to just mention a few things tonight. I had the opportunity to attend a memorial service for Lou Olmsted, who's been a member of our community for many years. It was a very well-intended memorial, and rightfully so. Lou was a great member of our community. She was a founding member of the Historical Society, and was just a wonderful person to know, and had been a part of the fabric of our city for many, many years. She will be missed, but I think the legacy that she leaves is certainly one of service, of one of engagement, and certainly one of just loving the people around her. And I certainly appreciate her example and her friendship, and I do know that she'll be missed. Also want to, on the other side of the spectrum, talk about something new, and Councilmember Johnson already talked about it, but it was the Federalway Youth Action Team's new, really mission, that what they are working on, I think, is something that is very important to our city. It's really about creating new opportunities for the youth, but also giving them opportunity to really be creative in the way that they approach things. And I really appreciated hearing the vision that the leadership of that organization has for engaging in the community, and look forward to seeing what they come up with in the next, going forward, certainly for many years to come. The last thing that I wanted to mention tonight was a celebration of the Ashley House. They had an open house at the PAC, and certainly appreciate the organizations that utilize that beautiful facility. I know in talking to Steve Freeborn, who's, I think, the CEO or one of the board members or the chairman of the board, very appreciative of both the staff for facilitating the event, but just the facility as a whole. Couldn't say enough good things about it, and how proud he is as a city that we've made the investment in something like that, that really moves us forward as a city and creates a future for us that is certainly much better than a derelict Toys R Us building that was there along with the other items of blight that that area was really identified even by a Federalway mayor just about five short years ago. So anyway, just definitely appreciative of his support, and Ashley House is a great organization. They started really out of a need that Steve and his wife saw to assist families with children with physical deficits at birth. And through their pain, losing their child, they've created an organization that really has continued to help families for many years. They are now, their headquarters is now located in Federalway, and they're a great organization. And just, again, one more example of the community of Federalway coming together to address the needs that are here in our city and being the answer rather than looking externally. So really appreciate their example, as, and as I mentioned previously to the Youth Action Team, answers are in our community, and I really appreciate the efforts and examples that these people have shown. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Oh. And we had, I don't know if I, why I didn't put it on the presentations or my mayor's report, happy birthday, Councilmember Copeng.
Thank you.
You took my line, Mayor Farrell.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anyway, happy birthday, Councilmember Copeng. How old are you now?
You don't ask that question.
All I have to say is, well, I appreciate the wisdom and how wise you are, so.
Now you're calling me old, huh?
No. Just calling you a person that has a lot of wisdom. You know, I just wanted to, again, reiterate my thanks to staff and my colleagues for the Native American Heritage Month proclamation. It takes a lot of work to put it all together and review the document and ensure that this document that's signed by seven plus the mayor, that we all agree with it. And so I certainly appreciate Deputy Mayor Honda's, her suggestions and our conversation that we had. It was just, you know, as much as it was intense to review the document and to make sure it fits to Federalway, I certainly appreciated all the dialogues that we had to come up with a good product where we could gain the signatures of all the councilmembers. So I think it's a beautiful thing outside of that. I think it's a beautiful thing to really continue to lift and uplift all voices here in Federalway. I think it's really important, and that's what this is all about, is uplifting our Native American voices and recognizing the contributions they have made, quite frankly, not just in Federalway, but within our county, state, and the United States. So I'm grateful for all of the guests that we had earlier, and, you know, I know that we've had a number of events that we've attended, as it was stated before. So with that, I'll end my report. Thank you so much.
All right. Katsberg Duclo?
Actually, I don't have anything tonight, but I'm warning you all, I'm going to have a really, really long one for my last night here.
That's right. That's right. Okay. All right. And with that, we are adjourned. Great meeting, everyone.